I see Birdtown. Doylestown, Pennsylvania. Was it the meeting that you made presentation for the Cap Cod? Nice to see you.
Good, hi. Hi, Robyn Lindsey. I think I was there, wasn't I? Yeah. Was that in July? Was that? Yeah. So, yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, so it'll be perfect. You all right? Oh, it's totally, I mean, you don't have to. Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Board of Supervisors workshop. With that said, we're going to call this meeting to order. We'll have a pledge of allegiance by Supervisor Thompson.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just wanted to apologize, we're running a little bit late. We had the police and fire budget tonight, which was open to the public. And after this meeting, we will be meeting an executive session as a board. So we have public comment tonight. All I ask is if you are going to do public comment, that you're not going to speak on anything that is on the agenda. If it is on the agenda at that time, then we'll do public comment. So is there anybody that wants to speak under public comment? Okay, sure. We'll need to have your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name is Jason.
Okay, can you turn on the mic? Should have a green button.
First time doing this.
Perfect, that's okay.
My name is Jason Nuss. I live at 2193 Carroll Drive. So for the past eight months, my neighborhood, established over 50 years ago, has been disturbed by a nuisance known as Shiny Shell Car Wash. Complaints and police reports were made by myself and my neighbors. There's been no change. Is Amanda Zerby present?
No, she is not.
She's been very helpful.
Okay, great.
The noise output Shiny Shell creates has been very stressful in our community and is also illegal. The decibel reading in my backyard is well over 65 decibels. My neighbor two houses down has a reading over 75 decibels. I measured over 95 decibels myself when standing about 20 feet from the exit of Shiny Shell. The lower Paxton Township Noise Ordinance states that a business may not exceed over 65 decibels into a residential neighborhood. Has anyone from the township done any readings of Shiny Shell?
Yes, I'll let Mr. Gutschall handle this. The police were out there, we just found this out on Friday, that the police were out there October 3rd and the 4th. So Mr. Gutschall has the decimal readings from then. And can you just tell me, has the decimal reader been calibrated, Brad?
Yes, of course, yes.
Okay. So do you want to answer his question because you have all the readings?
Yeah, I mean, well, I don't know that it'd be prudent or, quite frankly, permissible to release those decibel readings themselves, but as it relates to the township's investigation of that complaint, the township is adequately following protocol with regard to the noise ordinance and...
Where were the decibel readings taken place?
At the appropriate location per the...
Which location?
At the appropriate locations per the noise ordinance.
Which would be where?
Per the noise ordinance, the officers responding to that complaint had done the readings per the noise ordinance, so...
Okay, so an officer came into my backyard and did a reading?
Again, sir, I'm not going to give you the exact location.
I filed two police reports asking an officer to come out and do a reading. Nobody came, so...
Well, the readings were done, rest assured.
And they're okay? Shiny Shell wash is okay with the noise they're putting out? Is that the finding?
Yeah, I mean, no, no, I could just say that as a result of those readings, no citations were filed.
So Brad, I'm going to ask a question. So the ordinance Mr. Nuss is saying is 65 decimal points. Is that, is that right?
The...
Yeah, what was the number that you got?
Again, I had provided a report to the board relative to the readings of the noise ordinance.
Yeah, I know, but my question is, I want to know, is the ordinance 65 decimal points with the noise?
I'd have to pull it up, ma'am, to be honest with you. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head.
Because I would like to know if, and my fault, I did not look that up, if the decimal points is 65, if the readings are over 65 with the noise, then...
Again, Madam Chair, the police department responded to the complaint. They did the noise readings. I had provided that report to the board. And as a result of those readings, no citations were filed. So I think logically speaking, one could ascertain what the readings were, you know, relative to that complaint, so without giving the exact readings or, again, not having the noise ordinance language at the top of mind, I can't provide any specifics beyond that, but...
Is there any way we can get the number of decibels within this timeframe right now?
Per the noise ordinance, or?
No, the reading done in our neighborhood of Shiny Shell Car Wash.
Oh, again, I think, no, that is a result of a, frankly, a police investigation into a complaint, so I don't, you know, without doing a right to know to ascertain the police report, that's not going to be something that I provide to you at this point.
My understanding, Brad, is that it was, the maximum is 70.
Not according to the township website.
There are two, there are two ranges, one for, yeah, there are two different ranges, one being for residential and the other being for, and again, I, without having language in front of me, I believe it has its zoning related to business or commercial, I think to that degree.
Business, other district, yeah.
Business or other district.
So I guess the understanding is, without getting into a police report, is that it was under, it didn't violate the 70 DBA.
Can you show me where you're seeing 70? Because I've done research and I see 60 decibels.
Do you have the ordinance there, Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-02. I'm not reading the actual ordinance, I'm just reading notes. So you could very well be right, but I just wanted to provide some clarity here.
Yeah, 131-2, maximum sound level 60 decibels, a lot line of residential use in a residential district.
What is the read, what is the ordinance you're reading from?
What's that?
What's the ordinance? What number is the ordinance up top?
131-2.
And it's under the noise ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
And can you read that to me? Can you read it?
I'm just looking at a screenshot. At a lot line of residential use in a residential district, maximum sound level 60 decibels.
That's a residential district and they were measuring it for business other district because...
But we live in a residential district and the sound coming from the business is going into our district.
Yeah. Brad, is the, is the, is it business property in business other, or is that...
Again, I think the ordinance is written per zoning parlance, so when it says the reading at the lot line of the receiving, the receiving property, that's to indicate what zoning district is in. So again, I'm not sure, without having, without pulling up the zoning map to see where you are located within the zoning map, do you know what, by chance, do you know what zoning district you're located in?
Right now, we're office neighborhood, but we're going to be, we're going to be residential 2, I believe.
But...
They're changing it to residential 2.
Just deal with what you are now. Office neighborhood.
Right now, we are office neighborhood, but it will be residential 2.
But that's, that's why when the reading takes place, the...
Why?
As I'm trying to explain, sir, the, when the, when the reading takes place, it is done under the, under the scope of office neighborhood.
So what's the office neighborhood maximum decibel level?
70. 70.
Can you show me that information?
You have it pulled up right there, sir. There are two designations, one being for residential.
I don't have, I have a screenshot.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sir, I just want to...
Can you understand where we're coming from, though?
I want to, hold on a second. Listen, first off, I didn't vote for it to be there. I was the only one that didn't, but, but, but listen, and no, and that's nothing against the rest of the members of the board, but, but I have no dog in that fight. But what I'm saying is, this young man is acting like nothing has been done. My understanding is that, is that the Shiny Shell was asked to do some remediation even before those readings were done, just because of complaints, and they did do them, right?
Yes, yes.
So I just want to clarify, you are aware that we've been in contact with them, that they've been going through the process.
Yeah, Amanda Zerby has been.
You don't have to get so upset, then, because we are, we are on your side and we're trying to, you're getting a little upset. But that's okay. And I understand you live there and it's upsetting, but, you know, Brad has been, you know, fighting for the residents over that, in that community, along with the other members of this board, to make sure that they're doing their job. So, you know, we can approach this in a more friendly manner where you don't have to be so upset.
Sorry, I'm just nervous.
But we're not withholding information from you. I get nerves, but, you know, you know, but I think that, you know, we have to follow certain things. I think that's what he's doing. So let's approach it differently, okay? They've been asked to do some things.
What things have they done?
My understanding from what I've read is that they, there was an issue with the doors, they redid the doors, you know, they have been listening and they have been taking actions from what we've been seeing to try and remediate that. So I think that we, I would say, I would make the assumption, I guess, that we're on the path to try and fix that problem, okay? So we're on the same page. So the reading was done?
What's that? The door is rarely ever closed.
Okay.
So, that just shoots down that theory.
I mean, that was...
And also, the noise is coming from the outside blowers. So the door is not going to do anything with the outside blowers.
Yeah, I mean, yes, sir, I mean, sir, as it relates to what you're trying to say, sir, the, yeah, I mean, a number of remediation tactics have been taken, including installing the sound-related doors, which, yes, will raise up and down over the course of the operation there. Unfortunately, the, the way those conveyorized systems work is that the door cannot be closed the entire time. Of course, when the car approaches the end of that tunnel, the door unfortunately has to open, even when the blowers are still rolling, because that, you know, as you know, you've been through those things before, but, I mean, the blower itself is stationary and, of course, the car has to pass through in order to drive the whole thing. So they did that. They also did install some soundproofing along the tunnel. They did some software-related remediation. So a number of things that actually they were not required to do, the company did on their own as it relates to these complaints. So, you know, I think they're at a point now where they're not quite sure, the company is not quite sure what to do next, or if there is anything more that can be done at this point.
I have an idea. I have a petition here, signed by many of my neighbors, that the township, I demand that the township takes action against the noise pollution. One option may be building a sound barrier wall on the exit side of the building. Or we're open to other options, but to me, that makes the most sense.
I don't know if the board wishes to explore this any further, but...
I just want to get this clear. So the office neighborhood is 70, is what the decimal, is what the ordinance says?
That is correct.
Is 70, okay. And what did you get, Mr. Nuss?
Those readings are being done by uncalibrated devices. I mean, the calibrated devices that the...
But what if the police measured and it was exceeding? What, and obviously now I'm questioning you about the ordinance again, but what, what would be the action at that point? Would they be fined, or?
Yeah, there is a penalty provision, which does include action being brought before the MDJ. And yes, certain fines being levied, not to exceed $1,000. That is, okay.
Would they be, oh, go ahead. Sorry. Would they be open to putting some kind of a natural barrier, like some trees, some, you know?
They had explored that, but again, not being in front of that report, I'm not exactly sure. There are a number of roadblocks to that, to include, I believe, I believe there are some right-of-way issues or some underground utilities, I believe, in that area. That had been explored.
Because there is a hill kind of in front of it, so if, like, a buffer could be put up, you know, with some trees on top of it.
There's a fence there already, if they just make the fence into a wall, that would solve a lot of problems.
I mean, we were out there in May or June and we did walk up to the third house and we could hear it.
Yes.
Yeah, we could hear.
It's loud, yeah. And you can hear all the way up Carroll Drive at the top of the hill. Yeah. And also, another thing with building the wall, it would have helped, it would help deflect headlights going into our backyard. It's going to get darker earlier and we see cars coming right at our backyards with our headlights, so that'd be another, you know, kill two birds with one stone.
Maybe, maybe we can investigate with them if there would be, not to speak on...
If we could just talk to them again and just say, listen, there's an issue, we know you're meeting everything, but the residents are not happy, they have to live there, you know, with the sound, and now you said about the headlights, you know, coming into their backyards.
We will certainly make the request. Again, I, we will do what you tell us to do. I just, I'm not saying this to be, to be counter to this argument or not, but nothing that we approach Shiny Shell at this point is going to be a requirement of them to comply with. So they are in compliance with the approved plan. There is nothing that is taking place per our readings that poses a, some sort of a penalty with regard to the noise ordinance. So anything that we do at this point is purely a request. And again, I think Shiny Shell has done a lot to try to mitigate that and just purely from a business standpoint, it would be up to them to make, you know, to comply with our request.
I for one understand that. I think the rest of the board does, but I think we're being good stewards, so I think we need to just convey that.
You know, we're putting ourselves, as though we're living there.
Yes, thank you.
You know, that's what you have to do when you're sitting up here, you have to look at, what if I, you know, what if I live there? So Brad, let's do this. If, I don't know, if you or Amanda could just reach out one more time, just let them know that the residents have been in front of us again, and just ask them, you know, what, what do they think they can do?
Another question, they're talking about rezoning our area to residential. What is the maximum noise decibel reading for a residential area? I believe it's 60, so...
Or would they be grandfathered in?
That'd be a good legal question. I'm not quite sure.
Zoning changes...
Are you there, Ms. Davis?
I thought, I thought it was going to be an easy night for you, but...
I don't have that information off the top of my head. It's something I'd have to look into.
Okay, if you could check and then let Mr. Gutschall know, we'd appreciate it.
Sometimes that happens, the zoning changes, it's for things going forward, not, you know, retro.
So you said you're going to be in R1 or in R2?
I believe R2.
R2.
Is that correct?
I think we're already resold. I think I'm left, they're saying we were...
R1.
Oh, to R1? Okay.
So in that case, if they are getting over 60, they are breaking the law.
Okay, R1. Yeah, that would be interesting to see what, you know, the R1 decimal reading would be. So if you could find that for us, Ms. Davis?
Absolutely, yep.
Appreciate that.
That'd be great.
Okay, all right, so we're working on it.
Okay.
We're going to get that, we're going to have Brad or Amanda get in touch with them and see, you know, see what we can do. So, yeah, yep, we'll get you.
I hate taking so much time, but there's more.
It's okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm trying not to be angry or sound frustrated. Thank you for looking into this. I just wanted to point out, the lower Paxton Township Comprehensive Plan states that lower Paxton Township will protect residential neighborhoods and protect the livability of residential areas. Well, Shiny Shell contradicts that philosophy, in my opinion. The noise, the clashing colors, the bright lights, the carnival ride appearance, the increase in unsafe traffic, it just doesn't make sense. It doesn't fit. I just want to know, how did this process come about? Why was Shiny Shell put where it is, where it was, so close to homes that have been there for over 50 years? Did you guys know how loud it was going to be?
We didn't realize it, it was presented to us, you know, from staff, and it seemed like there wasn't an issue because they were meeting all of the requirements.
Suddenly, we got a ton of car washes coming in. And if the zoning allows it, we're not allowed to just say, you know, there's certain things that we can rule on to deny it. And especially in that area, you know, there's businesses there, there's, there's other kinds of things. So we're somewhat limited, once it's zoned a certain way, for what we can do. And obviously, I think anybody up here would say, well, if we knew that, because others have gone in and it hasn't been an issue, it must just be the way it's shaped and it happens to be aiming right, in the, right at the homes.
You think it looks pretty bad.
Others could, well, sure, none of these things look good, but if it's zoned for that, we can't say, sorry, it looks bad, you're not going in. We're just not allowed to do that. But we would not...
If you can allow it to go in, why can't you take it out?
Well, if they meet, if they meet all the zoning and they meet all the requirements and we cannot down a, and a project like that just because of traffic, we did do that a couple of years ago at the corner of Colonial Road and Lingustown Road, and we got whacked. And we were told by the judge, don't ever, don't ever come before us again because of that, because traffic, you cannot, if they meet all the zoning, all the requirements, you can't, you know, because of a traffic.
But this is honestly, the first time with all these other car washes, that this came up. So this, this would have gotten special, you know, a special look for that.
I think it's because it's so close to an established neighborhood and it's just so, the exit is aimed directly in our backyard.
That's what I was just saying, I think you're right. It's just...
I guess there was a vote on the community behind the car wash.
Excuse me, as soon as he's finished, I will allow you to speak. But we, yeah, okay, well, the only problem is you have to come to the podium, I have to have your name and everything, so when he's finished, then I will allow you to come.
And I just, if I, if I may, just clarify, it was not presented to the board by staff, okay? Developments, developers come to the board with plans, staff merely presents what has been presented to staff by the developer, with these processes take place. Staff merely provides to the board an indication on whether or not that development meets the exact requirements of the ordinances. So I think, don't take that comment as a misinterpretation that, you know, staff provides or advocates.
I'm sorry, but they, you know, they meet with staff and they met all the requirements, the zoning, you know, when it got presented to us.
Okay. These are all fair questions.
Yeah.
All right, so we will be on this.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Hope you, you know, hope something happens to help us out, because it's been unbearable. Our backyards, we have to basically yell, I have to yell at my kids so they can hear me. It's just not, it's not a way to live. You're, you want to come home after a hard day's work and relax on your deck of your backyard and you hear this noise. It's just, it's sad.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Sir, I'm curious, when, I'm new to the board, so I wasn't around when the Shiny Shell car wash was proposed.
Yeah, speak into your mic, thank you.
New to the board, so I wasn't around when Shiny Shell car wash was proposed. When, when the proposal was going on, did you all come from the neighborhood to discuss?
We had no idea about it. It just kind of popped up. There it was.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
It's a learning process for all of us.
And I have the petition here, I don't know if I should give it to somebody.
Okay, just give it to Ms. Smith, okay? Yeah, we're just going to give it to Brad? Go ahead, give it to Brad, okay? Great. Okay, all right, thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, yes. Name and address, please.
My name is Merrill Fusco. I live at 2194 Carroll Drive. As to the zoning, it's my understanding that the neighborhood, which was formerly the old country club, was zoned, I think, institutional neighborhood, IN, and Shiny Shell had to get a variance, it did not meet the zoning. They had to get a variance in order to put the car wash in there. Supposedly, they surveyed the renters, living, not homeowners, living in that neighborhood, and they said, sure, we'd like to car wash, but we were not surveyed. In fact, the public noticing did not come to us. I understand it was in a publication that's primarily distributed in the homeless town Palmaur Hershey area. We saw none of that. And according to the minutes in April of 2022 on your website, it was agreed to by the LLC from Utah in your township. That's my understanding of what happened here.
Okay, Brad, and I don't remember, it was so long ago, did they get a variance?
Yeah, I, I can't recall the development process on that, yeah.
Yeah, because that was a long time, I don't remember.
They did come before the board.
Oh, I know they were before the board, because I knew they were from Utah.
I believe the speaker is correct. I believe there was a variance requested, I believe.
So I wonder if they're in compliance with their variance from their institutional neighborhood zoning, because this is of great concern to us as neighbors going forward, if there's no public noticing on this, and if...
If there was a variance...
And if it can't be enforced, because from what I'm hearing here tonight, you know, you can ask them, but if they're still above decibel levels, it's like, I heard you say, there's nothing you can really do. I mean, I don't understand why...
No, if they're above, if they're violating the law, then they get fined.
They get fined, but what if they're, you mean, the zoning?
No, if they're, yeah, if they're, if they're violating the noise ordinance for what the noise ordinance applies to that tip, that particular area, then they get fined.
For each violation, or for a one-time fine?
Oh, it wouldn't be one time.
It would, it would be a per day, a violation is indicative of a day. It would, it would be a per day. A violation is indicative of a day, so it'd be a per day.
So much per day.
So going forward, you know, with the lack of public noticing and variance granted to out of state, because as Jason was talking about the Comprehensive Plan, that, the Comprehensive Plan says the objectives for that Blue Mountain Corridor would be to traditional design. So how did they get around that?
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the variance. So if there was a variance, that was brought before the zoning and hearing board?
Which would have been on an agenda.
I'd have to, I'd have to pull that. I, I can't even begin to recall what that.
So what I'm getting at, if there was a variance, that would have been posted on the property, when the date, the time, okay? So if there was a variance, there would have been like a stake with probably a yellow sign with black writing, letting people know. We just had one on Union Deposit Road and letting people know that there was, there was gonna be a meeting, a date and the time and what it was for.
Well, you know, I don't usually go walking around construction sites, so.
Well, it wouldn't have been a construction site at that time. It would have just been the vacant lot and the information would have been posted there and we're required to do that. And our zoning community development girl is very, very good at that. So I would say it is posted there. As far as being in the Hummels Town Sun, to put it in the Patriot News, it's like four times what it is. People aren't reading the Patriot News. We have to, we have to post it somewhere. We don't have a local little paper like we did before, like the Paxton Herald, and that's where it used to be posted. So that's the only place where we can post it. We go to the Patriot News, four times the amount. We're spending taxpayers' dollars for four times the amount and most people are not reading.
Right, well, I don't like the idea of having, that whole area, it may have not been under construction at the time, but that area is under construction, still under construction, because it's the old Country Club and it was developed, you know.
Yes, it would have been in construction, but not the Shiny Shell where they were.
No, they weren't under construction, but I'm not in the habit of walking around lots in a construction area to see what the.
It's hard, ma'am. You're right. People, we have these over here, we have these meetings all the time, monthly, and there's Planning Commission and we put the legal ads in there and I know people, nobody looks at those. Nobody tracks them to see if there's something involving their neighborhood and it's only after the fact that they say, oh, I didn't see that. And I'm, I have no idea unless it comes before me as a township supervisor. I don't look at those. I don't, I never did. People are living their lives and it's, it's one of those things. I mean, we tried, we put it on the Facebook posts. Usually our public meetings are on there, but not everybody's on Facebook and you have to click on it and go to the agenda and see, oh, does this involve my neighborhood or not? And it's, it's a lot of work, knowing that 99.99% of the time, it's not gonna have anything to do with your neighborhood. But that, that's an ongoing issue where people just didn't see the legal notice or didn't otherwise hear about it. And usually, if there's no problem, that's okay, but then when it's something like this, then it.
Well, I wanna get back to the Comprehensive Plan, which talks about the traditional design. And I don't think anyone would agree that that's traditional design. And preserving the rural atmosphere, that's, that's what the plan talks about. And then the first thing you know, they're granting variance for something like a Shiny Shell car wash that, you know, it's an eyesore. It's, it's out of, it's in violation of the ordinance and, and if they've mitigated anything, we're not aware of it. It's still the same noise level that we've experienced since they opened now for a year.
Okay, well, Mr. Gutschall is going to be investigating some more. Ms. Davis is going to get us, you know, with the decimal reading, what it would be, you know, if it's an R1 and we'll, we'll go from there, so.
Okay, so, um. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Could we please have your name and address?
Yeah, my name is James Grissinger, 2195 Carroll Drive. I have been in contact with you and Brad, I sent you something. I got no reply back from you, Brad. I don't understand why, if you're here for the residence of Lower Paxton Township. First off, I have made different phone calls to Shiny Shell corporate offices. The corporate offices told me flat out that they are going to work on this and it should be completed by December. What they mean by that, I don't know. I was told that they were going to put some kind of foam insulation inside, which I understand they did. As far as the door's concerned, sir, that is the same door that they put on when they built it. That's not an insulated door.
I think the report that we got said that it was just how the door was operating.
The report you got is that, okay. As of 10-4, the door had not worked for over three weeks or longer. All summer long, the door was up completely. They never shut it. 10-5, the door worked. That was right after I sent you an email, which was amazing. 10-6, the door is wide open again. So it isn't a problem with the door working up and down. It is a problem with the employees, whether they wanna put it on automatic or they don't want it on automatic. They have an override on that. Now, the corporate office at Shiny Shell has told me that they're still working on some other things that they can do. Shiny Shell needs 120 feet for their tractor on inside for that operation. That is the smallest that they can build. As far as you saying about these other car washes, if you go down 22, you'll find out that there's very, very few residential homes on 22. 90% of the car washes are in areas where there are not any residential homes. This has been put in to an area that was primarily a golf course for years. I've been in that, in that township for 50 years. You're saying that now that they could be grandfathered in because they're there. What about the people that have lived in that?
Yeah, I didn't, I said that might be the law. I'm not saying that's what I want. I'm saying that just might be the law and I don't wanna promise you anything or mislead you in any way. That's what that was.
But bottom line is, those houses were there before any of that building that was done over there because it was a golf course. As a good resident, Shiny Shell needs to come up with a solution or you as a board should have the opportunity to come out there and shut them down. You people have allowed it to be built.
We don't, unless we have a legal reason, we don't have the authority.
Right, legal reasons. Let me tell you something else that I heard out here. You had a gentleman that sat in here because he were gonna change a residential area. I think there was 50 homes in here and he wanted to go to 140 and they didn't know anything about it. You guys supposedly come up with all kinds of stuff up here about, there's only one road in, fair, police getting in and out. If something happens back there, there's only one way in, one way out. We gotta listen to this on a daily basis. Do any of you sitting up there have anything like this in any of your neighborhoods?
No.
No, of course not.
I have retail in my neighborhood where I live.
You have retail, but do you have a Shiny Shell?
No.
Nothing like this. So it's come to the place where I sit out in my backyard with a set of headphones because of the vibration and sound coming up through there. Robin, I know you were there. You told me you were up to the third house.
Yeah, we, we were there. We walked, yeah.
I would ask you and Brad, who for some reason will not give us the answer as what the decimal readings were. I thought this was supposed to be a open book as to what you find out. But obviously, he's got something to hide.
Yeah, I, I thought we were allowed to do it. He's saying, no, it's a police investigation, so.
The police investigation's been done. If they did, if they took a decimal reading, which is something that he should have done, which he won't get off his.
No, 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 the manager doesn't do, we need the police to do it.
No, sir, he was asked by me to come out and do that.
No, I know, but legally, to make sure, we're, make sure we could enforce a fine, we need the police to do it, not the township manager.
Does a township manager have a decimal reading? You do not.
No, I do not. Do you want me to have one, sir? Do you wanna buy me one?
No, it's.
Don't get smart with me.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Whoa, 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 excuse me, right now, enough is enough. Enough, enough is enough.
You're getting smart.
Enough, enough is enough. Let's, let's.
I asked, I just asked you a personal, a question here for you to personally come out there.
And, and we have been out there. I have been out to the site, but to ask me if I've, if I personally have a decimal reader and go out and do readings around the township, no, I do not.
We want it to be legal. We need the police to do it so that if we wanna enforce it, it's on the up and up. That's all.
The police have the decimal reader and.
It's gotta be calibrated. We, it needs to be.
And they're the ones that keep all the books with the calibration.
Okay, so if the police report is there, why are we hiding the fact that we won't give out the decimal reading? Isn't that supposed to be an open book for anything that's, that's been done?
I don't know how, how it's a police report. All we, the board did was just ask to have a decimal reading.
Yeah, if, if, if people want the, the, the actual findings of that reading, they should file a write-to-know and we'll address that request appropriately.
Okay, there you go.
And I don't think, let me just, I, I, obviously, the manager's not trying to get people angry and conspiratorial. I don't think, I think it's a matter of if a business or a home or anybody, if they're not breaking the law. So if the police come back to you and say they're not breaking the law, then you have to be real careful about where you go from there. So unless the police are not being honest and I don't think anybody's gonna say that.
I don't think they're going there.
Okay, so I think, you know, on the surface, I'm like, just lay all the numbers out there. But I think you get to a point where if there's a claim for, could be a home, it could be a business and that the police say, we measured it, it didn't, in this case, hit the 70 decibel thing, then there's, there's probably maybe some shaky ground if you start releasing information on something in which the person's not breaking the law. That's just me thinking off the top of my head.
You're saying that you have to have a calibrated decimal reader? Okay. You have, the neighbor down below me has taken decimal readings from his backyard. Jason has taken decimal readings from his decimal reader in his yard and the neighbors down below. Those readings basically have come out exactly the same. So I don't understand why we can't get, unless we file a police report on a daily basis about that being a nuisance. And that can be done because I'm just that kind of a person who'll make a phone call every day and, and report it to the police. I understand there was a problem with one of the establishments having too loud a music and that was shut down.
Yeah, well, we're gonna stay on this. I, I can tell you, we're gonna stay on this. What we're doing today is trying to separate fact from fiction and do everything we legally can do because quality of life is number one. I understand that. It's number one, more than taxes, more than anything else. So everything you're saying and your, and any frustration is completely justified and you can be assured, we're gonna do everything we can do.
Well, the next time you guys come out, please stop at 2195. I'll be more than glad to let you come out in the backyard and sit out in my backyard for 20 minutes to a half an hour. If you need to be, I'll take you out to lunch. I'm serious. I'll take you out and let you sit there beside Shiny Shell and have a meal there at that place. I'll pick up the tab. I seriously want something done. This is a nuisance. It's not good for our health. Most of that neighborhood, other than Jason, are basically in their 70s. And I'm sick of it. I'm sick of making phone calls. I'm sick of sending emails. I called, like I said, I've called Shiny Shell, the, matter of fact, I even talked to a gentleman in Utah who told me that, that he is involved with it and trying to get it done. And he was the one that came up here, I think, might have met with you guys before the corporate offices here locally. And I shouldn't even say locally, because they're not locally, they're in New Jersey.
Well, so I guess that, so I mean, the only way that the guy in Utah's involved in that, right, is because the gentleman sitting here to my right got them involved in that, right? So, so I think that.
So, sir, I called him.
Well.
He did not tell me anything with this gentleman here having anything to do with it.
Well, what I'll say is that we've been, you know, it's been noted and, and they've been working on it. And I guess that's what, that's what I was trying to say, is that it's, it's something that as a board, I think collectively, you know, we understand, you know, we don't want this for you. And, you know, and, and I believe it's still being worked out. Those were just, those readings were recent. So, I mean, we are, it's not like we're sitting here. It's not like Brad's sitting here. You know, the staff is working on this actively, so, and then I'll leave it at that.
Okay, and if you wanna do the write-to-know, the find the decimal, then you can just take care of that through the township.
Guaranteed.
Okay, all righty. Is there anybody else for public comment? Okay, chairman and board member comments? Board? Just one, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller? Okay.
Real brief. William Miller, 4311 Crestview Road. Last year, we had discussed yard waste. And as we moved into the fall and the winter, we had that event where we had all the frozen branches in the snow and no place to put it and people stacked it up and they had thrown away their trash cans because we got the new cans and so on. I just wondered, have, has anything, we, it was going to be looked into as to some alternatives. I did call every municipality around. In fact, I called Dig My Earth again today. They won't take our stuff.
Okay, so pen waste, you know, if, it can only be so long, wrapped in a bundle. You can use your old trash cans to put, to put it in, as long as it's not 50 pounds or higher. If you have a permit, you can also go out to the compost pile.
Correct.
And you can do it there, so I'm not too sure what else you're asking for.
I'm referring to after the time periods. It's gonna be, what, December, first week of December, when it snows, it shuts down until the first weekend in April, first Saturday in April.
Right.
So there's an interim period where we can't take any yard waste anywhere. The neighboring municipalities have systems in place, usually, a couple are honesty, but, you know, usually what they do, they record your face, your license, you have a little placard in your windshield and they trust you not to dump any ridiculous things in there, which people tend to do.
To go where? Where are they?
They're going to their own yard waste.
Okay.
Like in Hummels Town has one. I was taking mine to Zager Brothers, but now they don't want it. I found a place from Dig My Earth in Halifax. I'm just saying, if we have these events, can we use our own yard waste? I mean, I'd pay extra every other Saturday or. I mean, I'd pay extra every other Saturday, or if we have a snow event like we did, I had called and they weren't gonna do it, they were gonna look into it, is to open up our yard waste and get rid of this stuff. It's just gonna happen more and more.
You mean, take it out to the compost pile?
Take it out to our compost facility and try to have an alternative plan, because we, again, we have zero yard waste from probably the second week in December until the first Saturday in April.
Right, to the beginning of April, because it's winter, that's what the contract...
I know.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
We actually had discussions with Penn Waste about this. In the event of an emergency where we need to mobilize, they are ready to assist us with mobilization of strategically placed roll-off units to be able to put significant yard waste in. On a common storm where we might have 1% of properties impacted by some fallen trees from ice or such, we wouldn't have that mobilization. But if there is a significant weather event, we have worked with Penn Waste that they'll be willing to help us mobilize several spot stations where we could collect yard waste for those emergency bases, because we don't man the compost facility during the winter.
Right, right, in the winter time.
I know in the past, the township also had responded. They opened up the yard waste facility like, I think, two weeks at one time, we had that massive storm.
I think that will coordinate with this, but more specific to those centralized dumpsters and that purpose.
My purpose was just to plant the idea, because last year, we hadn't, we couldn't do anything. We had a lot of stuff. It was a, let's say, a spring of all kinds of debris piling up, and people wanted to get rid of it. The other question I had is just, again, it's just looking into the future. On Colonial Road at Elizabeth Village, there's an intersection. I don't know, and you guys would know more than me, but in a long-term planning around the township, all of you know where all these various choke points are. There's an aberrant traffic light on 22 right now wreaking some havoc, get the timings off. I talked to someone about that. But when you look at Colonial Road there, they're also gonna develop eventually the Park Sheasley Trust track that Sandy Prawl had, which has now been conveyed to somebody else. So who knows what that, what the new, what the new owner's gonna do? But the thing is, at that intersection, just to plan, is it gonna be a light? Will there be? How will you address all that acreage? I'm talking all the acreages from Earl Drive, behind the cemetery on Colonial, up behind the doctor's office at Devonshire, down behind the Devon Manor pool, and the whole way up back around Devon Manor through there. I'm just saying, at some point, are we looking ahead that far so we don't have the strange traffic light at Devonshire and Crumbs Mill that could be a timing solution there? The same thing at Crumbs Mill and 39, the same thing at the Harley Place. These are, these are established choke points, and it's only gonna get worse. And I don't know, if for law enforcement, the speed on Colonial Road's getting out of it, because there's so many cars. I go to Goose Valley and Colonial just because I want the sight line to pull out and not get whacked. You make, you make a left turn out of some of those roads, you know, heading south, and it can be interesting.
Yeah, there's been some traffic studies done. I know one at Earl, and of course, they are, you know, at Elizabeth Village, so...
And I am remiss in not bringing in the 2005 PennDOT study. I have to get that on a thumb drive, so I'm gonna have to have a young person do that, because I can't do that with the traffic lights. They made a lot of interesting recommendations in '05 that never came to fruition, so...
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I didn't know that the Sheasley land was sold.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just noticed that a couple days ago, it was conveyed to, I'm sure it was a family member, but I didn't know that she had any children, so...
Okay.
But it, it'll be interesting.
We'll look forward to seeing what they have, and we'll go from there.
Perhaps.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Any other under public comment? Okay, chairman and board's comments. This week is Fire Prevention Week, as we all know. The fire volunteers and the fire companies are out in the daycares and the schools. We just wanted to thank all three of our fire companies for all they do for the residents of Lower Paxton. We really appreciate it. Colonial Park had their open house on Sunday, and lots and lots of people there, and the kids were going up in the bucket, and they were just having a great time. So if you're not doing anything Saturday from 11 to 2, Linglestown Fire Company will be having their open house out on Linglestown Road. Also, I wanted to thank the Colonial Park Rotary for the Fall Fest that they collaborated with us on Saturday. The weather was absolutely gorgeous. I'm saying 1,000 to 1,500 people were there. There were free pumpkins, they had hay rides, there were bouncy houses. It was just a great community day, and we're trying to collaborate with other civic groups. We're already collaborating with the school district with our community garden. So it was a great day, and we look forward to next year, and hopefully, they'll wanna collaborate with us again, so. All righty. Birdtown Pennsylvania presentation. Heidi Schiver, right? Okay. If I could just have your name and your address and who you're with, Heidi?
Of course. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Heidi Schiver. I'm 350 West Sandy Ridge Road in Doylestown, Pennsylvania. Let me see if I can pull up my presentation here. I think I need some help. Maybe it's...
By the way, Mr. Miller, sorry, those water pills really work.
Okay, great, thank you.
God, you just work without the pills.
Okay, you good to go?
I'm good, thank you so much. Let me just go to the next slide. So I'd like to start with the mission. Birdtown Pennsylvania works in partnership with local municipalities and like-minded organizations, chapters, to promote community-based conservation actions to create a healthier, more sustainable environment for birds, wildlife, and people. We've been actively engaged within this state for over 14 years. Actually, we're up to 71 programs now across 13 counties. Sorry for not updating this slide. We've been growing very quickly. We are under the umbrella of Pennsylvania Audubon Council, and we're partnering with various conservation groups, including We Conserve PA, which runs the EAC Network for the state, Audubon Chapters, and the Bird City Network. The Bird City Network is a national slash international program. There are a number of bird cities and bird towns throughout the country, and there's, they actually opened a new bird city down in Brazil recently as well. Oops. These are the 71 different towns in the 13 counties and growing. We have here in Cumberland County, we have four right now, which I'll show at the next slide. There they are. We have Carlisle, Mechanicsburg, Upper Allen, and South Middleton Township. I just met with South Middleton Township's Birdtown Committee tonight before our meeting. They have lots of great ideas, and looking forward to collaborating with others. I just want to share some of the, our annual report totals, especially the one at the top. We actually logged in over 19,000 voluntary hours last year with 32 bird towns reporting. That comes to $579,000 in kind value, so very proud of the work that we're doing across the Birdtown Network. We are under the Pennsylvania Audubon Council. There are 20 different Audubon chapters in Pennsylvania, and they're working, we work together under the council to advocate and provide for conservation and preservation of birds and collaborate and share ideas and resources. We are under their, under them. They are a 501(c)(3) a nonprofit organization, and we're working with them and the Audubon Chapter Network to establish bird towns across Pennsylvania. We're especially working with Appalachian Audubon. This is your local Audubon Society. We've been working with them, they're really helping us, supporting us, and reaching out to different municipal leaders. We're currently also right now working with Camp Hill, Susquehanna, and Harrisburg. And that this gives you some additional information about Appalachian Audubon. So why are we focusing on birds? Birds keep our ecosystems running smoothly. They eat over 400 to 500 tons of insects per year. They also help reduce diseases like rabies, distemper, and plague. They disperse seeds, provide pollination services, and also help keep those mice and rat populations down. They bring us a lot of joy and beauty for just the amazing things that they can do. Right now, it's major migration time, which started on August 15th, so they're traveling all the way, some of them, all the way from the Arctic down to the end of South America, 10,000 miles, just one little bird. They also let us know if our environment is healthy. They're sensitive to toxins and pollutants, and can be an early warning sign that something is wrong. And birds are everywhere. There's over 90 million bird watchers in the U.S., and they're spending $41 billion a year. The birds are really in trouble. Based on the breeding bird surveys and also recent reports, the populations are ranging in decline from 30 to 77%, with some bird species even more so, and their numbers are still falling. Project Nest Watch, this recently from Cornell in the last month, is showing even our birds that our feeders are really, those populations are dropping as well. So there's a serious problem. Just some examples here. These are the grassland birds. These are birds that are really struggling because of loss of habitat. Their populations are down by 53%. And I bring here the migratory birds, every one of those, a Baltimore Oriole. Their populations are down by over 28%. They're being hit by loss of habitat, not only in our hemisphere, but also in the southern hemisphere. Major threats to bird populations are all these: loss of habitat. We have over 40 million acres of lawns in the U.S. with 2 million here in PA. Cats are a huge problem. 2.4 billion birds are killed per year by cats. Window collisions, pesticides, climate change, invasive species, and plastics, these are all threats to bird populations. So through Birdtown, we're addressing these issues through engagement, education, encouragement, support, inspiration, promoting awareness about these issues. And these are different things that a bird town can do, a municipality can do when they become a bird town. They can, like a native plant pop-up garden, a sale or swap, they can install demonstration native plant gardens, they can develop proclamations, resolutions, and ordinances to address some of these issues, such as invasives, adding native plants, addressing pesticide use, and so on. So as you can see, there's a gamut of different things that a bird town can do. These are some examples of other bird towns and what they're doing. This is from Allentown. They have a wonderful children's library program they've been doing every month of this year, working very closely with their local public library. Shaw Farm Borough, which is close to me, they're working and collaborating with their local watershed association, planting trees, removing invasives, and so on. And then Charles Town Township has been working very closely with the PA Game Commission, and they've established some purple martin condos, as well as cask trail boxes and barn out boxes as well. We've been working very closely with the PA Game Commission for our network overall. We have Dan Mummer, who's been coming out and assessing our bird town properties, or properties within a bird town or municipalities, such as parks and so on, you know, giving assessments of what issues can be improved upon, what invasives should be removed, what planning should be included to help support birds. So what we provide for our municipality is a statewide structured program with congruous goals. We have concrete resources and achievable actions. We have a framework for commuting, for community networking with other bird towns and other conservation organizations. We provide training and workshops for our bird town leaders, and working together, we have more opportunity and success in obtaining funding. This is our website. We have a rich array of resources, both on the front page and the back page. It includes a list of our conservation partners and other bird towns. And like I mentioned, on our back page, we also have contact lists for our program and other programs, all our workshop and meeting recordings, and also samples, for example, of proclamations, resolutions, and ordinances. We also have a section on citizen science programs, and these are great programs to engage with your residents, to get them on board. I think it's really important to have a lot of touchpoints with our, our bird towns, so these are a number of other ways to have touchpoints besides the two annual meetings that we have a year. We have the Birdtown Flyer. This is a bi-monthly newsletter for bird town leaders. There's also Bird Beat. This is a quarterly community newsletter that's really to inspire and inform your residents about what actions they can be taking to support birds and wildlife in their community. And then finally, we have the Birdtown Forum. This is a private Facebook page with over 200, actually about almost 250 members now. This is a chance for our bird town leaders to share upcoming events and inspirational I just want to give you some examples of what our workshop series look like this year, anywhere from addressing, actually using shade grown coffee, which is really helping reduce habitat loss in the southern hemisphere, talking about pesticides and how they're impacting birds, and what one can do, addressing light pollution, and then also how one can create a native plant seed library. And we have one more left, which is ornithropy next week. Oops, sorry. How do I go back? How do I go back to the other way? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Shelley. I can go forward and not backwards. Thanks. How do you go backwards? Oh, I see. Oh, I see, okay. I can do that there. Okay, thanks so much. Sorry about that, you guys. Let me go back up here. This is not working. So I was on this one, and trying to click on this. I want to go on this slide here. Usually, when I click on this slide... I did. I did double-click. Hit this one here. Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So also, I feel like regional networking is very important, too, really a chance for the bird town leaders to come together in person, so we call them bird town clutches. And these are all the different clutches now that we have. The one that would apply to the bird towns in this community, in this area, would be Appalachian, under the Appalachian Audubon territory. Let's see.
It doesn't want to move again.
I know it doesn't. Oh, gosh, I tried to do it for Pro. I apologize. To work across the community in different avenues, anywhere from municipal level to working with schools and also working with other, and so on. It's a four-tier program, so there's green, bronze, silver, and gold. All bird towns start at the green level, and then they work within the first year to try to go on to the next levels of bronze, silver, and gold. We have a strategies, goals, and activities worksheet, which helps provide inspiration and guidance of what bird towns can be working on. It's numbered in color code for easy tracking. There's two really important threads: habitat enhancement and addressing threats to birds. As far as the application process, it's basically meeting virtually first to go over the whole process, going through the different components of the toolkit, forming a bird town committee, asking for at least three people for a committee, just to ensure that it has a good, strong foundation, passing a municipal resolution to demonstrate support for bird town. We provide an example for, example to use, pay a one-time $100 application fee, and then complete the application, sharing your accomplishments that you've already done so far, and then also your future goals. Then the application is submitted for review to the outreach committee the first Tuesday of the month, and then we let you know right away if you've passed. This is just to show you all the different perks of becoming a bird town, anywhere from receiving two beautiful street signs, access to the different newsletters, the workshops, the leaders-only back page, and resources, and so on. So thank you so much for your interest in Birdtown. I really appreciate it. Sorry for the mess up with my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Heidi... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
So we were out this weekend, some of us board members were out this weekend in one of our parks for a Fall Fest, and one of the things that I noticed was that the lantern flies were also enjoying the Fall Fest. Do, do, do any of our native birds eat these bugs?
They're starting to. They're actually saying, we are seeing that they are starting to understand that they're a pest, and that there's something yummy to eat, so they will eat them, but it's not enough to, to really protect or stop that spread of population, this butterfly lantern fly. What you can do, though, is address the invasive plants that attract them, such as tree of heaven. So you really would look at your park, see what non-native invasive trees you have that are supporting those populations, such as tree of heaven.
So Heidi, oh, I'm sorry, you finished?
Just one other question.
Of course.
Are you working with any Girl Scout programs?
Oh, absolutely. So I'm actually working with 4H and Girl Scouts. Me personally, I'm in Doylestown Township and part of the EAC there. I'm working with a Girl Scout troop, putting a native plant demonstration garden at our local YMCA. So, you know, every municipality can decide who, you know, who they want to work with, what organizations they want to work with. But, you know, there's 71 of us now, 71 different bird towns, so we're inspiring each other, giving each other ideas, but Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts are great to work with. 4H is great. We're working with Delaware County's 4H program and putting a pilot program together, working with young and older students about different kind of programming, you know, creating healthier habitats and so on. And we're hoping to take that pilot and encourage other 4H programs across the state to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thanks for the questions.
Yeah, that was my question. I was just curious, and the other municipalities that you have, is, do you, are you involved with their Parks and Recreation, their Shade Tree, their Greenway Committee? What, what usually, where do you start?
Sure. It really just depends on, on the municipality, all the above of what you just mentioned. We can work it under an environmental advisory council, a Parks and Rec Board, a Shade Tree Commission, like you mentioned, also sometimes municipal leaders. We're working with Audubon Society of Western PA out in Pittsburgh. Many of the programs are being actually run under township leadership directly, so some So, some of the township managers have taken responsibility for the program. So, it really just depends on the municipality and what works best for you.
Mr. Miller, aren't you on the Greenway Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
You think they'd be interested?
Perhaps. I was, I wasn't following that.
No problem.
Notice you weren't paying attention.
Did you fall asleep there?
No, I was, uh, I have nine meetings a month, and I was trying to-
Okay.
Get out of one.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, we have your information here. We can forward it on to Parks and Recreation, which, you know, she does the, you know, the Greenway and the Shade Tree. You know, some of that stuff, we have liaisons for each of them. And see if they would, um, see if they would be interested. I'm sure there's probably people here in the municipality that would be, that would be interested.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I think we sell a lot of bird feed in Lower Paxton Township, so.
Wonderful, thank you, so. I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you again for having me tonight and having this opportunity to share about the program.
Yeah, and thank you for coming to see us, and safe travels back. We appreciate it.
Great, thank you so much. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, all right. So, Heidi, you just basically fill out the application and a check for a hundred bucks, and you're in?
It's not that easy.
Quite that easy. You need a committee, too. You need a committee of at least three people, and you need to pass that resolution. So, the resolution will need to go before the solicitor.
Before the board.
Right, so then the board would have to, you know, confirm it.
Yeah, we'll see where we can go, see if we can get some interest with it. Like I said, I'm sure there's residents that, you know, maybe might be interested.
Oh, for sure. It was just down in- Yeah, it was just down in South Middleton. They have over, probably ten to fifteen people, like, really interested in, in the committee already, so.
Oh, good.
They need just putting the word out there and letting folks know that-
Okay.
-this is possible. I'm sure people will come forward.
Well, it's like the community gardens that we're doing, you know, we put something, they put something out, and then they came to us, and now it's, it's gonna work, so.
Great, awesome.
Okay.
Good, good, thank you so much.
All right, great, thank you again.